Good evening and welcome to the February eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. We hold this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are two ways. While on your computer, if you wish to speak during the public portion comment of any item, click the raise your hand icon on the right-hand side of your screen. When the public comment period opens, you will be unmuted and you'll have two minutes to speak. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting by calling the number at the bottom of the screen and using the meeting ID. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak when the public comment period opens. You will be unmuted and you'll have two minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loia, can we get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Barstow? Commissioner Figaro?
Here.
Mr. Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
And Chair of the State Alcock?
I'm here.
And I'll note I'll note that Commissioner White is planning on joining us, but she's not here yet.
And at the staff's table, we have David Loia, Director of Community Development. And is there anyone else from staff that's here tonight?
Not at this moment.
Okay. So let's move to oral communication. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any request that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda item or referred to staff. Is there a member of the public who would like to address the commission tonight?
If you're hoping to address the commission on a topic that is not on the agenda, feel free to raise your hand. Okay, we have one. Go ahead, Fred.
Hi, I'm Fred Johansson, and I have a question of the committee. And it has to do with the Village Project as well as the Gateway Project. Are you basing your traffic flow on the two thousand seventeen Central Arcata area-wide traffic study? Uh, and if you're not, what are the other traffic studies that are available to you? That's my question.
Okay, I think we can address that in the course of planning commission deliberations on the item.
Maybe Mr. Johansson could come back during the business item? Because that's a really a good question. That is something that we will be addressing later on. If he can hang on.
Yeah, and I'll try and address that in my my staff report.
Yeah. Okay, so on. Is that was that it? Should I move forward? Or is there someone else? Okay. So on to the consent calendar, the only item is our January twenty-fifth meeting. Do we need to pull that item or can we get a motion from a commissioner to approve? Do we have a motion? Okay, so we have a first from Commissioner Tangney. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Mayor, can or Vice Chair Mayor? Can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Barstow? Commissioner Figaro? Commissioner Tagney?
Yes.
Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair of the State Alcock?
Aye. Okay, so we do not have a public hearing tonight per se, but we do have a business item that's fairly significant. This, um, the business item is the consideration of a draft gateway area plan. We will not be making any decisions or voting, so I'm not going to ask for any ex parte disclosures. And although it's just, it is just a business item, we will give members of the public a chance to comment. So before we open this to the public and begin commissioner deliberations, do we have any kind of a staff report? Dr. Loia?
Yeah, I do have a brief staff report just to orient the commission to the task tonight and to provide some well, the expectation of the evening's events to the public and to the commission. Ah, okay. Um, okay, I'm sorry, technical difficulty still. Commissioner White is trying to get in.
Maybe she can just call in.
She she's her. She needs to change her screen screen name. Oh, here, I'll do it, actually. Okay. Okay. Off to the races. Okay, so before you tonight, commission is the sort of subset or subsection of the Gateway Area Plan. Now, we reviewed this once before with the the Planning Commission. We have the entire document and there was, you know, some conversation about the the specific plan. I'll acknowledge that Commissioner White has joined us and we'll add that to the record. And and the intent for that night was to allow the planning commission the opportunity to dig specifically into, you know, the the policy document, the policies that are in there and ensure that, you know, what we've got in there is, you know, hitting hitting the mark for what the goals of the plan are and to make recommendations if not at this point. We've been conducting a lot of public engagement. Everything from walking tours to the event we held at the community center. We've been tabling at Farmers Market. We're having will come to you meetings. Each of the committees is having an opportunity to review the document at the community, at the committee level. And all of these engagement opportunities have an opportunity for the public to provide input and and comment on the project. One thing that has been highlighted to me recently, in fact, as recently as tonight, a person was commenting that the public may not really understand what is happening with all this engagement. What's what are we doing with all, you know, the conversations, the, you know, communications that we've been having? So before I get into the detail on the plan and and allow the planning commission the opportunity to get into that that discussion round, you know, are we hitting the right, you know, kind of policy level with this document? And do we have the right policies in place? I wanted to take one step back and say that what the intent is, is to use this policy document, which will ultimately become a an element of the general plan. So policy level document as the framework to start in on a more detailed discussion about the specific standards that'll be used to define what these buildings look like, the kind of uses, what what will be required of the buildings? And to give the community a good sense for what the future of Arcata could look like in this area. In order to do that more detailed work, we have to have some certainty around the framework. And so over the course of this month and parts of next month, we'll be doing all of this public engagement I just described, collecting all of this information. And staff will then at some point in March, is my hope, go back to the city council and say, this is what we've been hearing. Here are the themes. These are the specific recommendations. All of this information is before you. We need to hone in on a couple of key areas. One key area that we need to hone in on is building height. Because the next step with building height is getting into a design process with the community to ensure that we know that we're going to have high-quality design and what those high-quality designs are going to look like. Before we do that, we want to know, are these buildings, you know, eight stories tall? Are they six stories tall? You know, what is what is the maximum? Um, and so sometime in March, the city council is going to give us that first blush higher-level framework for for staff and the consultants to go in and start doing the more detailed zoning standards that would implement that framework. Now, that's not the last opportunity for the council to amend the document. The council may take a look at all of the the public feedback that we've received to date and say, well, we want to focus in on a couple of key areas so that you can get moving forward with this framework. But we want to mull over how these other policies or how these other recommendations for change, you know, move forward. And and we'll take those up at a later date. And I fully anticipate that's what they will do with the public feedback that we've been getting thus far. Sometime towards the end of the year, after we've gone through this year of engagement around not only the Gateway Area Plan, but the specific zoning that'll be coming out of the Gateway Area Plan that we'll be working on next, as well as the updates to the general plan that'll be coming forth. We'll be coming back to the council and the planning commission many times to get, you know, formal recommendations for how we hone in those documents to get to a final product that will be adopted sometime in late this year or early next year. So kind of a broad brush stroke on where what are we doing with all this information? Because I think some people are thinking to themselves, well, I've provided this input. I haven't seen the document change yet. We can't do that. We can't go and change the document every time somebody makes a recommendation. We have to compile it all and then weigh that with the decision makers. So that's the process that's coming up next. Okay, so I did want to do sort of just to run through the materials that were in your packet. Now, I said in the staff report that, you know, we can dig into any detail you want. If you want, I can bring up some other element. But I thought it would be important for us tonight to focus on the connection between land use, housing, land use designation, housing and infrastructure. That's kind of a core consideration within there. Now, I will say that, you know, we can, you know, go into building height if the committee, I'm sorry, if the commission wishes to, we can, we can delve into that. We can talk about that. It's not going to be a very productive conversation at this point because we don't have the materials available to us today to get into those more detailed discussions, but we can certainly go there. What I'd like to focus on is the policy around those areas, though, housing, land use and infrastructure. So with that in mind, I just wanted to hone in on a couple of pieces. So here's the land use chapter. And I want to walk you through how this land use chapter works. We've got these four development districts, the Gateway Barrel District, the Gateway Hub, Gateway Corridor and Gateway Neighborhood reflected in this map. Gateway Barrel District, Gateway Hub in blue, Gateway Corridor in orange, and the brown is the transition neighborhood district.
I don't see.
So each of these.
Yeah.
Could you share your map, please, so that we can all see it?
Zoom one oh one here. Sorry about that. So these are the the four designations, Gateway Barrel, Gateway Hub, Corridor and Neighborhood reflected by the nap, the map, the Gateway Barrel in the southern portion near Samoa, Gateway Hub in blue, Corridor in orange, and the brown represents the transitional gateway neighborhood. Each of these different districts, like all of the districts in the city of Arcata, have a different purpose, a different thing that we're driving for. There's a lot of overlap and similarity between these districts with slight variations to accommodate the potential that's within each of those districts or or the, you know, the transitionary nature of them. So let's just dig into this in a little bit more detail. So with the Gateway Barrel District, you know, these couple of critical pieces. The idea is that we're not going to create a whole new framework. Internal circulation is based primarily on bicycle and pedestrian modes of travel. The idea being that we develop a campus use that has minimal vehicle infrastructure. And then those land uses within them would be focused on mixed uses. So like the rest of the district, it'll be up to the developers to decide when it's time to put more retail or when it's time to focus more intently on on housing. And we can go into the purpose for that, but that's that's sort of generally how the just all of the districts work. But we're anticipating within that mix of different land uses that it's going to be highly residential. There's going to be a heavy residential component there. The Gateway Hub, this this blue area in the center, which incorporates the Creamery Building and a large portion of the Creamery District. Within this Gateway Hub, again, vibrant, high-intensity mixed-use area allowing for a broad range of residential, retail, office, personal service, restaurant, entertainment, light manufacturing and other similar uses. Think of the Creamery District. Just multiply more of it. Basically what you have going on now, but more of it. Gateway Corridor, again, that orange area along K and along Samoa focuses more on design that allows for for retail. So active inviting high-intensity mixed-use designation requiring pedestrian-oriented ground floor design. There's a different aesthetic you get from commercial buildings than from residential buildings. And the intent here is that, you know, will feel, if not actually be, commercial corridors. And then the upper floors have primarily residential uses. So that's sort of the the drive between those districts. This Gateway Neighborhood allows for the lowest-scale buildings, lower densities, and it's a transition from those higher-density Gateway Core to the lower-intensity residential uses, primarily residential low-density uses just outside the district. So the way that this policy will translate into the zoning when we get to that point is that these designation descriptions will help us to identify what will be allowable, how we frame what's allowable and what those standards will be in the the form base code. And so it's going to be important to understand these. Pause for a second. See if there are any questions.
No questions.
Quick recap.
Easier. I mean, it really does make it easier, Claire. Does anybody, oh, Commissioner Mayor has a question.
Yes, when can we expect to see a draft of the Gateway zoning code? I know on the schedule it said twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. But but it's 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 very difficult to you know, look, look at this in the level of detail. I think we're being asked to look at it and without having that draft code before us.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. We have to get the framework in place first. And so to make sure that we're on target with these policies. And when the council gives us the go-ahead with that, then we'll start working on Gateway zoning code. We'll be able to bring that forward to the community for, you know, to start review on that and certainly to the planning commission as well. Okay, so from those land use.
I think Commissioner Tangney has a question, too.
Okay. Is there another question? Okay. Jump, jump in if you have a question. Okay, from those descriptions of the different zones, we then go into the vision, and this is similar across all of the different elements. And I just wanted to point out these couple of first sentences. It says, Gateway Area Plan envisions a mix of residential and non-residential uses, but does not mandate specific land uses on specific properties other than requiring residential uses. Instead, the plan expects a mix of land uses will evolve organically over time in response to changing market conditions, social demand and development opportunities. So this is very different from the way that our current code is structured, where we have a land use table that says you can do this, you can't do that. This one requires a use permit. The intent here is to go through this visioning process as a community, identify the fact that we want to have a good, healthy mix of economic activities, retail opportunities and living opportunities in this area. And then go with a light touch on the land uses and allow the market to develop those. This could even retain light manufacturing within a site. So so generally speaking, our zoning codes say, if you're going to have light manufacturing, it has to be excluded from housing. What we've seen, however, is that there's in this district light manufacturing, even some heavy manufacturing, pretty close and adjacent to residential uses. So we already have a test subject out there that shows us this is, you know, valid and viable plan. And it'll really be up to the the building owners to ensure that there aren't doing something that's disadvantaged at disadvantage to their own under, you know, bottom line by creating incompatible uses. There will be uses that are not allowed, and we'll get to those in a little bit more detail in a moment, but there will be uses that aren't allowed, that don't move forward the vision of this, you know, this community vision. Things like, you know, heavy industrial, they're just not compatible compatible with this vision. So, you know, relinquishing some of that authority for land use mixes to the private market, similar to what we've already done in the Creamery District, requiring that we get or or incentivizing that we get residential uses and then providing a middle pathway for for uses that don't meet those housing goals that aren't illegal uses. The next, I'm not going to go over the target land use mixes in detail because we could get lost in the detail here. But if you have questions about this, I'm happy to come back to it. In a sense, this is an estimation of how much residential versus economic activity we anticipate will occur. And we could tweak these numbers up and down. Right now, we've got a target dwelling units, and this is based in part on, you know, the elevations of buildings that we got proposed. So if the building elevations come down, we'll have to revisit this table and and downgrade the targets here. But we can come back if there's interest and dig into this table in more detail. This is not regulatory. This is really just at a policy level. This is what we hope to see in this area. And if we're not meeting these targets, we either need to reevaluate our targets or we need to reevaluate our regulatory framework to push us in the direction of those targets. The next section gets into the policies. So these policies are intended to establish an overall land use arrangement that promotes mixed use, multi-story buildings, the clear emphasis on high-density housing that is equitable, environmentally sustainable, compatible with the envisioned neighborhood character. I'm not going to read any of these specific policies, but I do want you to come back to any of these if you feel like we've missed something that doesn't accomplish the goals here. Couple of the key pieces are that we don't have a maximum residential density. We do have minimums that we would like to see, but we don't have a maximum. And the reason for that, eliminating the density maximums here is because, again, there are going to be developments that come in and target different sectors of our market. And those different sectors of our market have different needs. And in order to ensure that the, you know, the building types meet that market need without going through some sort of, you know, loophole, which is what we see developers doing now, then we should just relinquish that and and allow them to bring to market the housing units that we need. The loopholes I'm talking about, for instance, are where a developer will come in and build a four-bedroom, four-bathroom unit. And, you know, it's because of the the maximum limit on units that they're basically creating four units within one. And then they're going to rent each one of those bedrooms to a student. So they're trying to target the student market. There's a need in the student market. And instead of coming in and building, you know, you know, they, you know, can only build up to thirty-six units per acre, so they build thirty-six units on an acre. And they make each of those thirty-six units a four-bedroom, four-bathroom unit. When you talk to these developers and you say, well, you know, if you're allowed to go to a higher density, would you make these, you know, smaller, you know, maybe one-bedroom or studios? And infallibly, you know, invariably, they say, yeah, you know, that's that's what I'm targeting. So so it's sort of like eliminates that interplay between our, you know, our zoning and, you know, meeting the market demand. The other one that I wanted to, you know, point out is that, you know, we do call out the Form-Based Design Standard here, and in fact, the land use program, the implementation measure is to develop the Gateway zoning code, which is what Vice Chair Mayor was asking about earlier. Last section I want to focus on in this element is the non-conforming uses, site conditions and structures policy. This has gotten a lot of traction. There's a lot of confusion in the community about what happens with non-conforming uses. There's a lot of misinformation in the community about what types of uses would be considered non-conforming or illegal in the future. And so I just wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about this. Now, a non-conforming use is essentially a use that is not a legal use, not an allowed use in the zoning code that was in existence when the zoning code was adopted. And so let's say you have a burger shop and your burger shop has been there for decades and the city comes in and rezones your property and says, no more burger shops on this property. You would be non-conforming. With a non-conforming use, you can continue those non-conforming uses indefinitely. There's no one who's going to tell you, you have to come and shut your doors. There's no one who's going to come and tell you that, you know, you have to get out. Non-conforming uses can continue indefinitely. If a non-conforming use is demolished, let's say there's a fire, you can rebuild your non-conforming use. Non-conforming uses can continue to maintain and upgrade their properties and and continue to be viable businesses. There are There are. Likely to be very few uses in the district that are existing that are considered non-conforming. We're, we're not likely to have sawmills, for example, as a, an allowable use. And so if you have a sawmill in the district, you would be considered non-conforming in the future code. Um, not, I think most would agree that sawmills are generally incompatible with the vision that we're, uh, you know, bringing forward here, the community's vision. And so what happens with that sawmill? Well, essentially they can continue to operate. Uh, and they, they, as long as they operate on that site, they can continue. Um, there are policies in here that say that we would work with them to relocate. And so we're, we're interested in helping to further the vision by assisting, uh, the private market to, uh, to further that vision and, and help them to relocate somewhere else in Arcata. Many of the uses that I've heard people concerned about, uh, for example, auto shops, um, you know, uh. The. Um, you know, other commercial uses, um, that, uh, you know, light manufacturing uses, um, that I've heard people concerned that, you know, this code would make illegal. Or non-conforming is just not true. In fact, the, if you read through the, uh, paragraphs that we just went through with the, the zoning. Um, or the land use designations, we talk about light manufacturing, we talk about retail, we talk about all of these different uses that are existing in the district. And so those uses would not be non-conforming. They would be conforming. They would be legal allowable uses. Um, and so, you know, some of the concern I think is about, you know, what's going to happen to my business is misplaced. So I'll just put in an ad real quick. If you're concerned about, you know, is my business non-conforming or conforming? In the future, give me a call. We'll talk about it. Again, these are uses that will be detailed in. Uh, higher resolution in the zoning code, and so we can talk through what those uses are, and it's an, an important conversation for us to think about what those uses are now. Um, I did want to highlight this one section though, because it says, and in some cases require non-conforming uses to relocate as specified in the zoning code. And I think that this has been misinterpreted and we need to refine this language. This would be one of the edits coming forward. The intent here is not that day one we'd come out and start working to relocate you. But instead that we would partner with you to relocate if you're interested in doing so. And so back to the sawmill. Um, when the sawmill is operating, you know, it's obviously going to be annoying to people who are living next door to it, immediately next door in the parcel adjacent to it. And so we're going to work with that sawmill if, in particular, if the person next door comes in day one and says, hey, I want to, I want to, you know, help build out this plan. We're going to work with that sawmill to help relocate them to somewhere else in the city of Arcata. We have a, an industrial zone in the north part of town off Weston Road. It would be a perfect location for them to go. Um, so this isn't intended to imply that. We would require non-conforming uses to relocate immediately. This is intended to imply that we would be, uh, working with those, those, um, businesses to relocate them. Okay, so land use obviously ties into housing. There's a high emphasis on, uh, housing in each of these different districts. I'm going to kind of zoom through this. There's a lot more, um, highlight here, but I'm just going to zoom through high level. Again, reiterating that, you know, infill development meets our economic development needs and fills other general plan goals, like, you know, preserving the greens, green spaces around us. Um, and this is where we get into, you know, the concept that there's no maximum residential density. Instead, we would be, uh, focused on how does that building footprint interact with the, the street? Um, one way of thinking about this is, um, you know, that we're in this plan more concerned with. The built environment and the relationship to the human scale. Than we are with counting specific units, recognizing that if you take a certain space and you can find the outer limits of it with. Um, you know, bulk mass and, uh, you know, upper floor setbacks and so on and so forth, and then you give it a maximum height. If you, uh, have a four bedroom. Uh, unit and you have four one-bedroom units, you're probably going to be housing about the same number of people. And so it's a, a person per unit kind of. A person density kind of impact that we're talking about here. Um, I talked about this, that we be setting, that we set minimum residential densities in this plan. Um, the other thing I wanted to focus on is that we're actually going to drive certain policies through. The incentive programs to encourage, you know, mixed income neighborhoods, mixed tenure neighborhoods, make sure that there's, uh, owner occupancy, uh, options. Um, uh, you know, promoting affordability, housing affordability, making sure that there's student housing built out. So on and so forth. So we're going to, through these policies that are implemented in here, what, you know, the question could be raised, well, why are we saying this specifically? The reason we're saying this specifically that we want to see mixed tenure, that's a goal of the plan, number one, and so it needs to be identified somewhere as a policy. And number two, we can then leverage that policy into a specific measure, uh, through the amenities program that. Projects that would get the streamlined permitting would be able to select from, and then we'll be able to say, okay, you're selecting mixed tenure. Good, that's what we want to see as a community. Um, I'll also just touch base. Not only do we want to, uh, support, uh, businesses that, that are either displaced by landowner decisions or businesses that. Aren't compatible with the neighborhood that we want to, uh, see relocate elsewhere in the city of Arcata. We also want to support, uh, the rehousing of people. And so there are many sites that have, uh, you know, existing, uh, residential uses. And if those sites are developed, we would work with them using our, our, um. Our grant funding to develop, uh, transition plans to help relocate them. We can talk about that more as, if, as needed. That's identified here as the resident relocation assistance. Okay, lastly, uh, infrastructure. Uh, there's a lot of concern about, well, how are we going to build this infrastructure out? How, you know, when is it going to happen? Who's going to pay for it? Uh, lots of questions like this are coming up. I encourage people to look to the frequently asked questions. It's on our website. It addresses each one of those questions in detail. Um, at a super high level, I will tell you that yes, we are going to need additional infrastructure. Uh, specifically, uh, we'll need, uh, new road systems, we'll need new water systems, we'll need wastewater systems. Uh, we'll need new park amenities, we'll need new trail amenities. All of those things are built into the plan. They're identified in here, uh, as well under mobility. Uh, streetscape, open space. But we, in this planning document, a lot of people look at this and they're, they're asking those really detailed questions, and they are very, very good questions that we definitely need to answer before, you know, adopting and implementing this. Um, but the level of detail in the policy document is to establish that this is our goal. We intend to accomplish this vision. This policy sets the framework for accomplishing this vision. And then there are other documents that are going to be supporting to help explain how that vision gets implemented. Uh, zoning code is going to be an important piece to that. Uh, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program associated with the environmental work is going to be an important piece to that. All of the special studies that we do for that environmental work is going to be an important piece to that. And so when we're planning for, uh, utility infrastructure to accommodate the envisioned growth, not just in the gateway area, but as, in the city as a whole. We're going to have, as we get into subsequent layers of detail around this planning effort. Those questions will be, um, addressed. And so if you have, you know, questions, I can kind of, you know, go over highlights of, you know, what those answers are. I don't have specific detail right now about how we would pay for that infrastructure. I can tell you some of the mechanisms that we might look to. And one of them, which I think is really important, is this one, the enhanced infrastructure finance district. This is sort of like redevelopment, like. So, uh. Thirty-second elevator speech on redevelopment. Redevelopment agencies were essentially, uh, funded on the basis that tax increment will grow over time. The tax dollar will grow over time as property values increase. And that if you project out that growth over a long period of time, a third year period, let's say. You will be able to, um, secure, uh, you know, millions of dollars in funding to do projects now. And so we would issue bonds now against later tax dollar revenue. An enhanced infrastructure financing district borrows that concept using future tax dollars. As the leverage to pay for bonds that we would finance now that will help pay for some of this critical infrastructure that we need. And do projects in the area and pay for relocation. And so this is a mechanism that we should look into. Um, and I'd certainly like to hear feedback on that from the, the planning commission. Um, lastly, I'll just point out that, you know, GA eleven D recognized, you know, and we actually wrote this before the Polytech, uh, was. Was, was, uh, released as a thing. In fact, we need to change some names in here. Uh, but the idea is that, you know, the university is going to grow. The university is a huge part of our economy. University is a. Huge driver for growth in our area. And we need to work with the university. They need to help partner with us on many of these infrastructure costs. And so that has been a question that, that, uh, many public members have wondered about, you know, what's, what's the university's role in this? And so we hope to, you know, have the policy backing to be able to reach out to the university and say, hey, we need to, you know, work together on these things. So I'll leave it at that. Um, there's a lot of other, you know, really interesting things we could dig into in here, but I've, I've spoken enough. I'd like to, you know. Um, hear from the planning commission and maybe address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, um. Do we want to start with commissioners asking questions or do we want to open this to the public and then end with the commissioners, what? I get some feedback on that? Commissioner Davies?
Well, I'm not sure if we are going to do commissioner questions, but I had. Had a question regarding, um. Some of the public transportation components of the plan. So happy to wait if we're going to take public comment first.
Okay, so, um, since it doesn't seem like.
I like the idea of going to the public right now.
First, okay, so let's up, open this up to the public. And we'll give everyone, um, do we have a lot of members of the public? I can't hear you.
We have about twenty-nine attendees.
Twenty-nine, okay, so, um, let's do two minutes. Um, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so please, uh, raise your hand if you'd like to speak on the item. And I guess just before I do turn it over, I just realized I didn't answer Fred's question initially. Um, the long story short is that no, we're going to need to do more traffic studies to, to address the growth that's coming up. Okay. Uh, go ahead, Katrina, uh, Corina, I'm sorry.
Hey, everyone, um, I was just wondering, um. Does anyone know how much bond debt the city is already carrying? And also do we really, really need more traffic studies? I mean. We know. What's traffic looks like and what it's going to look like. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, and just, uh. Again, uh, so folks understand the, the process here. We'll go through all of the commenters and then the planning commission can ask me to address the questions as, as they see fit. So I'll be taking notes on those. Uh, go ahead, call in user two, or one rather.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, yes, I had a question. It was, um, about the number of units. And I heard you say that. I thought I heard you say it was one person per unit, so thirty-five hundred new units equals thirty-five hundred. Uh, potential new residents in the gateway area. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but then also I wanted to know. I know, um, the plan really is emphasizing a car-free lifestyle. I kind of wanted to know what that looked like, how many. Parking spaces per unit or per person, actually, is what I'm more interested in is. Would the plan provide for? So how many, um, people are they expecting to not own cars?
Okay. So, um, is that all?
Um, yeah, that's all.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Dennis.
Uh, hello, um, commissioners, uh, my name is Dennis Halligan. Um, I'm a resident. Arcata and have been for a long time since nineteen seventy-six. Um, I'm also a former member of the Wetlands and Creeks Committee, and I'm currently the chair of the Forest Management Committee. Uh, although I am here, um, as a private citizen, because I, um, do. You know, I felt like I needed to, to talk as a private citizen. Um, I recognize the need for the gateway, given that, uh, projected area. And although I do have some concerns regarding the potential, uh, for impacts on the management of, in the community forest and small non-industrial timberlanders. I understand, you know, the non-conforming use relocation thing that, uh, David was just talking about, which sounded good to me. Um, however, um, the relocation of a sawmill such as the R and L sawmill down there would result in significant cost. For the business, which the owner would not incur, but for the gateway plant implementation. And I was wondering, would the city help pay for those relocation costs? Streamline permitting or otherwise reduce your share of the cost? You know, uh, too much to bear for the sawmill itself. And the plan has an objective to provide for the retention or generation of jobs. And it would be a shame to see the sawmill. Uh, close or, you know, and lose those, uh, jobs, especially when. Um, they actually purchase logs from the Arcata Community Forest. And as you are probably aware, we put some pretty large diameter logs, which a lot of the local other, uh, sawmills up here, such as, uh, MRC. Uh, they do not take, uh, these large diameter logs. So as a consequence, we have to ship them all the way down to Cloverdale or Will. Which results in higher transportation costs, uh, greater greenhouse gas emissions and things like that. So. It would be nice to see that. Um, um, uh, mine paid. Or how we would end up managing the Arcata Community Forest and.
Dennis. Dennis, I'm sorry, that was two minutes.
Wow. It's amazing how quickly. Okay, well, you guys get to just.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Kurt.
Um, am I there? Check, check.
Yep.
Hi, um. I, I'm, I want to address the, um. It seems, it seems to me the city has been given a hail mary, a, a life ring, so to speak. By guaranteed housing demand, and I feel like we're just going to squander it by building more development. Uh, it's, I mean, the city is. Well, well, the city is broke thirty years ago. It is completely broke now. We probably owe three hundred million or more in deferred infrastructure maintenance. Uh, the sewer alone is at least a hundred and fifty million. Um, in just the pipes, we have eighty-year-old pipes. We have, uh, a wastewater plant that's. Uh, consistently, um, non. Uh, uh, out of, out of spec. And what we can do as a city. Is encourage all our current residents to. Increase housing in our current footprint. This would increase tax revenue and give us at least a chance to survive the next thirty years. As it stands now, I, it doesn't seem like we will. Uh, the sewer is going to fall apart. We won't have water, our gas bill, our, our gas lines are going to fail. I mean, I, I don't, I don't get it here. It seems like we're acting like a. A twenty-year-old who got his first paycheck and went out and is going to go buy a brand new truck. Uh, we can't afford to buy a new development and, and maintain it. Like this, this new development is going to bring some revenue and it'll be great. Until it starts to fall apart and the city has to maintain it in twenty years. I don't think the city is going to make it for twenty years. Like, who's going to pay for the new wastewater treatment plant that we absolutely need? This is, this to me is just crazy. If we were to instead. Include this new residence in the current footprint, increase density in our current footprint, we might survive. I want to ask every commissioner, in twenty years, how do you see us surviving as a city with this mass? Massive problems.
I, Kurt, that, that was two minutes. Thank you. Lee, go ahead, please.
Hi, maybe I'm not understanding the numbers correctly, but I looked at your housing element to understand how much Arcata is obligated to grow by under state law. And it shows that Arcata is responsible to grow by six hundred and ten units between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty seven. I understand this is a long term plan, possibly twenty year plan. But according to your analysis of population growth, you show that the population will increase by twenty nine hundred people in twenty years. If you're building thirty two hundred units, which accommodate two people per unit on average, you seem to be planning for sixty four hundred people. That's more than double the twenty nine hundred you state in your housing element. In addition, I'm wondering about this screenshot of an Arcata Planning Commission meeting on November tenth, twenty twenty, I saw on Facebook page, which indicates another area of development in our green belt. It shows that three hundred and fifty six acres would be developed, accommodating another twenty five hundred units. It runs from Foster and Alliance up to the Pacific Union Elementary School and west into what looks like it includes the Sun Valley Bulk Farm. Twenty five hundred units increases the population by another five thousand people. Is this a plan for the future? My question is, does this plan serve the people of Arcata and protect the quality of life we enjoy? Your housing element states that you need to take that into account when you plan for development. People live in Arcata exactly because it's small, there's no traffic, it's quiet, it's clean. I agree, it's important to be in compliance with state law and grow accordingly. But from what I see, anything more than that cannot be benefiting anyone but developers. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Lee. Go ahead, Carly.
Good evening. My name is Carlisle Douglas. I reside at fifteen eighty eight J Street. Let me begin by saying that in general, I'm in favor of planned development in West Arcata. But I would really like to say to planning commission members tonight that to emphasize how important to Arcata's future it is that you all do your due diligence on this gateway plan this year and really understand the changes to procedures and codes that it contains. Please seek expert independent counsel outside of city staff to interpret the ramifications of passing the gateway plan. Second, I would like to ask all concerned citizens to take a moment to shift your attention away from building height and really focus in on the language of the gateway plan that provides for streamlining and fast tracking the approval of developers proposals. This in combination with a shift to form based code opens a path to a significant change in the character of Arcata. Third, I'd like for all of us to question the sense of urgency that is being promoted around approving this plan. The development would happen over the next twenty years, but a vote to deviate from our existing general plan is being pushed this year. While the state of California did devise a formula and mandate cities to grow, most California cities are finding they are unable to comply with unrealistic expectations. Why should Arcata be in the minority of cities who creatively figures out how to comply with a state mandate for growth that does not take into account our unique geography? And lastly, I'd like to plant the seed that we make a plan for our own city of Arcata to start buying land in West Arcata and create resident owned housing on city owned land. This model has been very successful in other cities across the country. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carla. Go ahead, Jane.
This is Jane Woodward, and I would like to second everything that Carlisle Douglas said and add to it that when we're looking at the required additional units or population. Not only do we need not to plan for a huge number within beyond what the state requires in a very short period of time. But we need to look at what H S U is doing when it comes to looking at what our infrastructure needs are going to be. They're going to be developing and putting eight hundred students or faculty, I don't know how it's allocated on the Craftsman Mall. They're also going to be building and have plans to build additional residents on campus itself. I don't know what the numbers are at this stage. So when we're talking about how many more people we're going to be accommodating, how our infrastructure is going to have to accommodate, we need to look at what H S U is doing on campus and off campus on buildings and and land that they have acquired and take that into account and balance that against what we feel we have to do to accommodate this additional number of people. But I'm very concerned about the infrastructure needs in terms of water wastewater treatment and how we are going to pay for all this. And are we expecting developers to come in and develop these properties? And is it going to be too pricey for them to do that? Given all the infrastructure requirements that are going to go along with it. So I think infrastructure has to be taken into account in all these plans and what the requirements are going to be. Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks, Jane. Okay. Number one, go ahead.
Sorry, I had a little confusion typing my name.
That's okay. You're number one.
So anyways, my name is Patricia Kamianika, and you've heard from me quite often. I'm really, really, really happy that to hear the community come out tonight. There's some great comments from them and concerns. I think they're spot on. The language in this draft plan is like extremely vague, unclear, there's conflicting statements. As far as the light industrial folks go, the rezoning of it is very confusing. What exactly, you know, what are the illegal uses? Um, I think there needs to be clarification of what's considered light industrial and what's considered light manufacturing. These businesses bring in revenue for the city and if we're just have a bunch of housing infill, where is our revenue going to come from? There's also like the the language on helping working, you know, helping and working with businesses to relocate. To what level is the city going to cover the full cost of a business to relocate if they're forced to do so? So and then what exactly is like the community vision is thrown out a lot of, you know, as far as like what's not going to be allowed by the community vision? Who exactly is the community? Because the community isn't really, you know, voicing the same concerns or the same visions that are in this plan. So I think there's a this draft left, that's a lot of questions. What's the actual, what's actually driving the target quote unquote number of housing units? And do we really want to give so much decisions to the developers on what? How to decide what actually our city of Arcata needs or is that should that be left to the people of Arcata? Anyways.
Thank, thank you, Patricia.
Thank you.
Uh, Colin, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. We have over six hundred members and supporters, and as you know, we strongly support this gateway plan along with many of our other local environmental organizations. I would like to point you to our comment letter that stated December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. That goes into detail on a number of things, and those comments are all pretty much still relevant since, as Director Leo pointed out, nothing has yet changed in the draft plan. So please check those out if you haven't already. I do want to address a couple of specific issues that I think are misconceptions. One is the idea that population follows housing and so that somehow the city will build a bunch of housing and that will induce population growth. I don't think that there's any real evidence of that. And in our sort of market driven system, in fact, housing follows population and usually lags quite a bit. Currently, you know, if you look at prices, you'll see there's already an enormous demand for housing that's not being met. There's a lot of people who would like to live in Arcata who live in Eureka or McKinleyville and have to travel farther to get here for worker school. And I think, you know, regardless of what happens in the future with population growth, there is already existing a very strong demand for housing that's not being met. Another issue is paying for infrastructure. There's been quite a bit of research on this and and actually the only kind of infrastructure, municipal infrastructure that typically pays for itself for local governments is the kind that serves higher density urban type of forms. But is that being proposed here? So I think we can foresee that this will not be nearly as much of a drain on the city coffers as the existing development styles that we already have. And the final issue that I want, I guess I'll save that for another time. All right.
Thank you, Colin. Uh, go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. I have a really quick question. Can you express in units per acre, what is the density of the sorrel place building? And my question relates to the fact that I've seen really attractive courtyard style apartment buildings that are two or three stories tall and that surprisingly provide densities of fifty to eighty five units per acre. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There's anybody else who wishes to speak tonight? Please raise your hand. Uh, go ahead, Aaron.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, well, I know I'm not in Nostradamus. But as a result of this plan, I see an ugly, dreary, loud and dangerous city that will be lamented by everyone in this meeting at some point. And the current residents of Arcata will grow to resent this decision that City Hall is bringing forward. But this isn't really about current residents at all, is it? It it seems like folks are so hopped up on the prospect of newcomers that they're done hearing from the contributors in this town that made it what it is today. In that way, the gap is antithetical to the Arcata General Plan twenty twenty. Take for example, the McVane Trush Project. They provided an attractive mixed use building with solar and did a historic daylighting of Jolly Giant Creek. They used to be the good guys under the old plan. Now, under the new paradigm in City Hall, they were given the finger with the sorrel place. Our neighborhood was given the finger with the Edge Connects Data Center, a principally permitted blight. One that so sneakily didn't make it onto the Gateway Opportunities Zone map. All I see inside the prison fence is a huge parking lot, very few jobs, while taking up an entire city block. Maybe you guys should look into how that property can come into compliance with this controversial plan update. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Tori, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, David. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, council members. I'm Tori Starr. I'm the President of Open Door Community Health Centers. I think most of you are familiar with our organization. We're the largest provider of primary care in both Humboldt and Delmore County. I'm also a member of the North Coast Healthcare Leadership Group. And I wanted to just, number one, express, I think, appreciation for the hard work and effort that the city is putting into doing thoughtful planning and development around housing. And I think David and his staff have done an excellent job of getting stakeholder input and really being responsive to the community. What I wanted to share with you today, and it's a it's it's remarkable that the second most important thing on my agenda as the leader of the healthcare organization is actually housing. Because it's directly impacting our ability to recruit workforce. And so I've been a longtime resident of Arcata for over forty years and dearly love Arcata and the residents. And I wanted you to know that there is really nothing more important than safe, affordable housing for our community. Without that, really, nothing else works. So we have certainly seen the impact on those members of our community who are houseless. But I want you to also know that our workforce is being significantly impacted now. And as I said, our ability to recruit providers, physicians, nurse practitioners, nurses is now being impacted in this day because of the cost and the lack of affordable housing in our community. So I want you to really be thoughtful about that. And if we really want to be able to have a community that grows and thrives in the long term, we have to be able to provide safe, affordable housing for all of our residents, or else we won't be able to function well as a community. So I applaud the effort and appreciate all the work that's going into this.
All right, thank you. That was two minutes. Jim, go ahead.
Thanks, David. Just a couple of comments, and it's concerning amenities and objective standards. And a couple of things on amenities, which I may or may not understand correctly, but is it true that there's an amendment that if you build quicker on your project, it'll be considered a public amendment? Another one, which I think was discussed earlier, was building parking garages is considered an amenity. The builder will be able to charge for the parking and then also that won't be considered a height, so therefore possibly a six story building within a district could suddenly become a seven story building in which the parking is an additional, what I would assume to be an amendment more for the builder than necessarily for the actual community. Although it could be for the community because in a sense it might force people not to park there, so it might work out in the end. And then ultimately on objective design standards, which I think are going to be really crucial in this project as far as as it moves forward, because it's really going to be the only thing on the other end of planning where planning will have a moment to actually maybe dictate what the project's going to look like. And I'm wondering, when will those be developed? And will that be something that's open to the public to discuss? You know, to actually allow this to be something that could be really productive and allow for structures that actually might reflect the ideas of the community. And that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me fine there, David?
Yeah, yeah, you're coming a lot clearer.
Yeah, I don't have a lot, not not much of fancy words or any of that business. I'd like to think I'm in more of an encouraging tone tonight, but I liked your presentation. It seems appropriate for this stage of the process. And I think the idea of phasing your idea that you suggested phasing some of the more concerning items for discussion, you know, and get things kind of going and squaring away to where the public and the councils see a reflection of of all of the input that you've been receiving. You know, it'd be nice to see that to start happening. I think that'll really help encourage people's trust and ability to understand all of what, how the process works. Anyway, yeah, I like watching the process go and I look forward to seeing some of those changes coming back in concrete ways that we can see. And that's all I have. Thank you again, David, for all your hard work.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Colin user two.
Hello, this is Nancy.
Hi, Nancy. Go ahead.
I'd like to express my support for a lot of the elements of your vision. And one thing I would like to see is, and I have a question about when and will there be the modeling that you'll be sharing with the public of the height of some of the buildings and their shade projections? That's one question. And also, there's a lot of talk about what the developers will do or won't do. And could you shine some? And could you shine some light on the info from the developers? How many developers are you dialoguing with? Less than five, less than ten? In the area, out of the area? So, you know, if that's really kind of driving some of the design decisions here, that would be good to know. And also, I just was curious about the sawmills and where they're going to relocate in, you know, fifteen years. At that point, are you allocating land or will there be anywhere out of West End for them to move to? And also, and one reason that that's a special interest of this area is Redwood is unique to this part of the country and, you know, our county, and it can't be done in a lot of other places. So that's, that's all my questions for tonight, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other folks that wish to speak? I see one, one more hand, Cher, but it is someone who's spoken before. So before going on to another round, I wanted to check in with you if you wanted to open that up for another round from, you know, so everybody gets a second chance, or if you'd like to bring it back to the Planning Commission at this point.
I think we're ready to bring it back to the Planning Commission if everyone has spoken. So the public comment period is now closed and it is time for commissioners' questions and comments. Who would like to start? Commissioner Davies?
Yes, I had a question specifically about the public transportation component of the plan. And I'm wondering specifically, how are we linking either increased usership of public transportation or increased facilities like buses or routes actually of public transportation with the expanded development in the Gateway Project? Does it proceed with a metric on a building-by-building basis? Is it population-based? Those kinds of levels of specificity, I think, would be helpful as we address the shift away from parking to reduce the vehicle miles traveled as the report calls out. Thank you.
Yeah, great question. We didn't cover the mobility section today, but that's certainly something we can bring back. But in the mobility section, you know, it does address some of these alternative modes of transportation. As was pointed out by some of the commenters tonight and is sort of embedded in all of the document, this really is designed to be a, you know, car-free neighborhood. That doesn't mean that there will be no cars in the neighborhood. That means that you can live there and work there without a car if you choose to. Currently, the standard for parking in the downtown and the central commercial is one space for every three units above seven units. And so if you have seven or fewer residential units on a property, you're not required to provide any parking at all. So that's a current policy. It was implemented in the general plan in the zoning code twenty years ago. And then if you get above seven, for every three units, you have to have one space. So it de-emphasizes the, you know, placement for parking. And that's about as far as our current code goes towards supporting alternative transportation. This plan has a number of measures to try and decarbonize, decar our, our society. For starters, I do fully anticipate that the, you know, the decision-makers will ultimately adopt a less than one-for-one parking per unit standard. And the reason is because this, you know, this was motivated by the desire to create jobs and housing, not to create parking spaces. The second thing is that going beyond just the standard, as we've done in our current zoning code, we have several programs that will be built out through the implementation of this project. One is a bus pass program. And so for projects of a certain size or for projects that are less than that certain size threshold that want to take advantage of this program as an amenity, the, the units will come with bus passes. And so right now, you, you rent a unit and typically that unit comes with a parking space. In the future, envision a world where your unit comes with a bus pass. So that helps to fund and provide additional revenues to our busing system so that they can become more efficient. Right now, we have kind of a chicken and an egg with the busing system in our, our community where not enough demand to drive the headways that we would need to really satiate that demand. And so we get into this, you know, circular argument of not, not having enough, you know, busing. So through this program, we would actually be creating a funding mechanism to increase headways, to increase supply, so that at some point that supply becomes sufficient to generate a demand, that it's easier to jump on a bus than it is to get to your destination using some other form. In addition, there are provisions for, you know, car share programs. There are provisions for building out infrastructure for biking and not just bike lanes. We're talking about a place to store your bike indoors when you get to that location, potentially showers at places of work. So if you ride your bike into work from Eureka and you get there and you're sweaty, you can take a shower before you sit down at your desk, for example. And so the plan goes several steps farther than just saying, we want to encourage people to not bring their cars. And so through future development, we're going to make it more and more difficult to find parking in our community. That's our current attitude. We're taking a step further than that and saying, how do we actually build out the underlying infrastructure, the support necessary to make having a car-free lifestyle a reality? So I hope I've kind of addressed, you know, what the question was. Certainly ask for, you know, find a resolution if I haven't quite hit on it yet.
So that was very helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
I was wondering what plans there are to integrate the unhoused community, for example, for the housing into the Gateway Plan?
Yeah, that's a good question. The other sort of central tenet of this plan is to provide a range of housing for the entire community. And so that goes from, you know, our lowest-income residents to our highest-income residents and to make sure that there's housing that accommodates all of them. We're working to try and develop pathways for not just having a mixed neighborhood. So you would have, you know, a lower-income building in the same neighborhood as a higher-income building, but a mixed-income building so that you can't tell the income of the person who's walking out of the building just by the building that they're walking out of. And so there's no specific provision that says X number of units will be for permanent supportive housing. But we certainly would support those types of projects in the future as we have in the past. And in addition, there will be a threshold, what's called inclusionary zoning requirement for projects of a certain size that they provide certain amounts of units for, you know, certain percentage of unit for, for lower-income folks. And the deeper you target, the fewer units you have to provide is typically the way that these incentive programs work so that we can really get into that deep targeting through the private market. In addition, there'll be an amenity associated with providing additional. So if you trigger, say, ten percent of your units have to be affordable based on the size of your project, and you say, I'm going to give you an additional ten percent affordable housing, and that's going to be, say, up to moderate income, one hundred and twenty percent area median income. So we're getting not only low-income housing, but moderate-income housing in the same project as well as market rate housing. We can create pathways that will, you know, drive the market towards, you know, providing that full range.
So I'm wondering how that would work for supportive housing in a mixed-income housing unit where they would be including wraparound services and that kind of thing? Would it work? I don't, I don't know.
I I don't know either. What I can tell you as well is that state law requires that permanent supportive housing be permitted in the same fashion that any other similarly typed housing be approved. So if it's a multifamily zone or a mixed, you know, mixed use zone and a project came forward that proposed permanent supportive housing, it would have to go through the same process that any other mixed use project would go through. And so it's, it's possible to have those, you know, permanent supportive housing buildings come in as well.
Any other questions? Chris, may I ask, can you?
Yes, thank you. David, I have a list here and I'll just go through them and you, you know, give as brief an answer as you need to on some of them.
Okay.
Residential home ownership, we all know what a big feature that is in developing kind of family finances over time. In the last decade or more that I've been on the commission, nearly every project that's gone through particularly well, large project, is rental-based, including our most recent four-story downtown project. And I sure hope that this ambitious development in Arcata would include a lot, a lot of options for homeownership. And I'm just wondering how we can influence that. I get that market forces are very real. However, if there is something that we can codify on this, I would sure love to see that included and even perhaps reigniting the first-time homebuyer stuff. So I'll leave it at that for first question and then I'll continue.
Okay, yeah, real quick on that one. We definitely want to incentivize and prioritize mixed tenure. That's a policy that's in the document right now. And, you know, what that would look like in new development is basically condos that, you know, folks could come and buy the condo. What it'll look like in, in the broader market within Arcata, you know, the, the hope is sort of what the, you know, theoretical model is that as we provide more and newer housing, high-quality housing for folks that really ought to be in apartments-type dwellings but are currently in single-family housing stock, renting that because that's all that's available, we'll start to see a shift over time. So that's, that's kind of the, the market theory that we're operating under. Whether that actually happens will have to be proved out over time.
Okay, thank you. And then a question that's come up from public to me is about parks, you know, where people are afraid of these tall buildings, lots of shade, and where's outdoor spaces? And if some of them house many, many families, where's the play area? You know, it's, it's not on a little balcony or something. It's got to be associated with these projects. So I'm imagining that in our code, there's ratios per family or per unit or something of where parks get developed and that those will occur within the overall gateway zone, but I would like to hear briefly about that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. And I'll bring up another image from the document here. This time I'm actually going to share it. Okay, so this is figure seven, the conceptual open space plan in, in the plan right now. And it's got a range of different kinds of outdoor spaces planned for. The first that I'll point out is the linear park. So long, you know, creeks, long rails. We can, you know, improve the type and quality of outdoor amenities and, and spaces here. And you can see a couple of those where, where there are opportunities for that. So this would be outdoor, you know, kind of recreational space. There's also a large site on the Los Harbers project and this, you know, these, these figures, you know, are, right now they're in draft. They may be reconfigured, but basically there's a large wetland out here. And so laying over the trail plan as well as the open space plan, there's a lot of opportunity on some of these sites, even though the city doesn't own a lot of this. You know, the, the idea is that we would, you know, through this community process, be identifying sites that have a high potential for for this outdoor recreational space. When you zoom in on the Barrel District, there's a kind of a square, like a plaza, an open plaza space similar to, similarly sized and similar to the downtown plaza that we've got planned for in here. And then everything within this red box basically has, it's, it's in what we call the, you know, private publicly accessible private open space. And so there would be, you know, parks associated with developments in this area that would be privately held but open to the public that they can go and use. And then lastly, the design concept in particular for the Gateway Corridor, but also these elements can be pulled into the Gateway Hub would include street setbacks that incorporate into the public right-of-way, some private space. And so you wouldn't know as someone walking down the street that you were walking on your private property, you know, it would just look like a contiguous wide-open sidewalk and maybe there'd be benches here and there, you know, little chessboards or whatever, that kind of thing. And you would just naturally, as you were walking through that area, assume that it was part of the public open space because of the design elements. And those would be accessible as well. So the city doesn't own a whole lot of land in this area. But the other thing I'll point out, and I'm, I'm not going to zip to the, the specific map, but you know, there's, I'll share this one with you. You know, there's a ton of existing and proposed trails that go all through here. These existing and proposed trails get you to, you know, lots of nearby spaces, including, you know, the Marsh, the Arcata Sports Complex. All of these are within, you know, approximately five-to-ten-minute walk from almost anywhere in the district. And so the idea is that we'd be leveraging existing park resources and then creating new privately-held park resources within the district.
You're on mute. You're still on mute, Dan.
How's that? Sorry.
I'm in good, I'm in good company.
Yeah, if HSU buys in the district, that will lose control over their footprint, like could be happening with the Craftsman's Mall property. So I just don't know how that plays out. And why don't I just throw out a couple more questions and then you can answer them in bulk? What sawmill are people talking about? Is it the one that's recently arrived on Samoa Boulevard over the last four or five years? Is the Sorrel Building that was referred to, the new project that's just south of the Plaza? And then in the long run, what will be the review process for each project in the zone? Is this, are we heading towards some kind of, I heard here, form-based code? Does that mean that it's ministerial as long as they fit the form-based code? Or does each project go back through the scrutiny like we experienced with the Dan Coe project south of the Plaza? And that's my questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, actually, we had a request by Vice Chair Mayor to bring back a more detailed explanation of, you know, how HSU and their purchasing power and our process, how those intersect. So we're planning on bringing back an agenda item on that, another business item to go into detail. But to your question about, you know, what happens if HSU purchases property, it's absolutely true that if the university develops it, then they don't go through our land use process. We're a referral agency and we tell them what we'd like to see happen, but they don't have to go through any kind of permitting process with us. And we do lose control of those sites in terms of land use. The sawmill is the one that you referred to on Samoa. It's R and L Lumber Sawmill. And we've been in discussions with them. I'm not, you know, going to go into detail about that, but, you know, they're, they're aware of the plan and you know, I think that, you know, most folks, if they looked at the city of Arcata and they were going to build it from scratch, probably wouldn't design it the way that it's ended up being. We have a lot of legacy uses that evolved over time that were related to, you know, past industries, past practices, past land uses. And so really, the, the work that we're doing right now is, is a revisioning, a reimagination of what this area should look like in the future and that we and that we would like to see a transition over time. Sorrel Place project is the project off the plaza that I believe folks have been referring to. It's the one on between Jay and I on Seventh. And, you know, the question about what does the process look like in the future is a great one. We've we've talked about this many times before. I didn't go into detail on it today. I kind of hit it high level. But the the idea is that, yes, we're going through a community design process right now that we are talking about, you know, what do we want the look and feel of the city to be? What kind of amenities do we want? We're doing this on a landscape level, on a master planning level to try and identify on a, you know, on a regional plan, what we want to see happen with our community. And then we're turning to the development community who is, you know, not our, you know, that not our enemy. They're our ally. The the development community is the group that's actually going to build these things that we say we need. We turn to the development community and we say, this is what we'd like to see. You know, can you provide it to us? Now, some people have said, well, it's going to get too expensive. They're never going to be able to afford it. And it may be the case that, you know, some of these plans, some of these provisions, some of the amenities, they may be too expensive. And and part of this discussion is to engage with the development community, engage with the banking community. You may recall the the study session we had on alignment that we want to make sure that all of the sectors, including, you know, the government sector, you know, the part that we can bring to the table, align to provide the kind of development that this community needs and that it says that it wants within those design parameters. So if we'll have a form based code that will talk about, you know, what the developments look and feel like. We'll have an amenities process that will be similar to conditions of approval. You know, they'll bring forward the the, you know, types of offsite projects that we want to see in our community. And when a development comes forward that provides for us what we said we wanted in this plan, it will have a streamlined principally permitted pathway for projects that can't meet those objectives. And so, you know, let's say I'm, I'm, you know, manufacturer. I build widgets and I employ, you know, 50 people and I've got an expansion plan to build more widgets. And I'm going to increase my my employment base to 100 people. Well, that's not principally permitted in the plan, but just like it would be right now, there's a planning process that that widget maker can go through. They can come to us, go through a planning permit process. They would say, you know, these are, this is what I'm bringing to the community. It's not going to be housing because I can't think of a way to make, you know, widgets and not bother the people who live above me. And then we would have a conversation as a community, does this still fit within the, you know, the gateway plan? Does it still fit within our vision? Are 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 there certain conditions of approval that we need to put in place to ensure that that widget manufacturer isn't impacting the adjacent land uses that we envision? And so there's still a pathway for for projects that don't provide the housing that we're asking for. It's a standard process and that's in place right now for those projects. And then just like every zoning district, I mean, I think we get really hung up on this. What uses are not going to be allowed? You know, there are all these uses that aren't going to be allowed. You go to every zoning district, there are tens of uses that aren't allowed. And so it's the same in this district is that we'll have uses that we've set as a community. These aren't compatible with this future district. And that's that's how they will be, you know, incorporated as as existing nonconforming into this new code.
I have a few comments. And I'll do what Dan did and I'll just throw everything out there and whatever you want to comment on is good. So I think I made myself clear that I I don't really like this project. And I'm so sorry. I know everybody works so hard on it and it doesn't matter if I like it or not. But Arcata has always been so cutting edge and nonconforming and innovative. And I just feel like this is sort of common. It's like the exact same plan you've seen in so many other cities. I wish we had something a little more tailor made to our area, but neither here nor there. But I did have some questions that are more significant. And one is regarding the developers. You know, I I'm curious, what if a developer developer, you know, purchased these properties? I mean, they're target lots, we know that, and they're privately owned. What if they submit a project that doesn't fit the criteria? You kind of touched on that just a minute ago because that that could happen. And then I'm also worried about, there aren't a lot of developers here who can afford to do this. We we know one. And are we at all concerned about one business owning all of these properties in Arcata? That could, we don't have to change Arcata to, you know, Dan Co. bill or something. Are we concerned about that at all? What would happen with that? And then the other question I had was regarding the range of housing, different, you know, so not everybody wants to own their own house, but a lot of people would like to own their house. And then, so in the past, well, I'm just wondering, how is a city going to encourage homeownership, especially affordable? It seems like in the past that affordable housing was always, there were so many strings attached with affordable housing right now with our affordable housing program. It it made it hard for the homeowners to build equity and take that equity with them and, you know, move up and then have that place open again. There's always so many strings attached and it seems like people move into these affordable housing and they can't get out and they can't build the equity because there are so many strings attached. And in fact, that's part of the bigger picture on all of California is, you know, people, older people like me aren't moving out of their large homes so that younger people can move in. It's part of the whole picture. So I don't know, what kind of ideas are you guys thinking to help, you know, people get in, be first time home buyers move into their home and then build that equity and maybe prosper? So those are my questions.
Yeah, those are great questions. You know, as to the the project or the plan being tailor made, I mean, this is the process we're going through right now is to ensure that, you know, we've, you know, taken several years of of public engagement, took what we heard, created a plan based on what we heard from this community. Now reflecting that back to the community and getting a whole nother round of engagement. And we're going to, you know, reflect that back to the decision makers and they will ultimately tailor make this plan for our community based on that input. So I know that, you know, some folks, you know, everybody's coming at this from a different perspective. Some folks think, you know, three story buildings are too big. And, you know, there were a lot of questions asked by the public that we didn't get back into. And I'm I'm happy to address those if you're if you're interested. But but, you know, part of the objectives that we have here is to, you know, meet, you know, not only our state housing goals, but, you know, our goals for for our community as well. And I think a lot of the times, you know, we frame, you know, the the idea that we're, you know, building in the community and that building is for someone who's not part of the community right now. And so therefore, you know, it's negatively impacting me or not building in the community right now doesn't impact me because I've already got, you know, what I need to live. And so I'm not, I'm not one of the members of that group, that cohort that's that's looking for something. So, you know, I just don't want to see things change. The the reality is that, you know, this does have immediate impacts on us as a community. One of my, one of my coworkers, city of Arcata employee, worked here for years, it's a good solid job, you know, pay is, you know, is decent and, you know, makes a living wage. Recently became homeless because of the housing situation in Arcata. The people who owned the rental she was in couldn't find a place for their daughter to live because of the state of the housing market. And so they asked my colleague to leave. And they, you know, asked her to leave within 30 days and she was homeless because she couldn't find another place, just like the person who they moved in couldn't find a place. So it's, it's, you know, the people who are teaching our kids, it's the cops who are patrolling our streets. You know, it's the the nurses that are taking care of us, the, you know, the county workers, the city workers. It is our community that we need this plan for. It's true that it, that there's a lot more housing that could be built if the total maximum housing was built out, you know, based on what's in the plan. But the reality is that we're not planning for all of that housing to be built out now. It's not to be built out, you know, within even the 20 year planning period. It's just a theoretical maximum. So so how does that relate to, you know, to housing affordability? Well, you know, it's a supply and demand equation. You know, you're a chair in the real estate market and you understand that, you know, the prices for housing goes up when there are a few fewer houses on the market. Those become a hotter commodity. Forbes has recently identified our area as a white hot market for housing. There there are words, white hot market. The houses, from what I'm hearing from our real estate professionals, that houses are selling now, you know, within days of being listed for over asking price, significantly over asking price for cash offers. And so what that means, what that translates into is that the housing market currently as it stands, you're you're not affected by it as long as you don't step outside and need to get into that housing market personally, maybe. But if you do, and I encourage everyone to take this exercise, you know, get get a sense for what your house is worth. Assume that you have 5% of that as a down payment, that you're a new, you know, community member that's looking for a home in Arcata. And then figure out how much your monthly housing cost would be as a result of that. I would guess that many of the people who are owners in the in Arcata right now, in particular, if you bought, you know, five, 10 years ago, you wouldn't be able to afford your house right now. And so we are the community members, it's us, it's the type of people like us that we're talking about here. It's not necessarily some future, you know, amorphous them, it's us. How we tie that to housing affordability is by producing enough supply so that the the, that we can disrupt that market factor. Many of these people who are buying our houses are coming from out of the area. They're cashing out of their their homes in, you know, San Francisco, LA and moving here because they can tell the world or moving here because they're, you know, close to retirement age and are deciding, you know, I'm just cashing out. The average home price, the median home price in California right now is $680,000. The median home price in Humboldt County right now is like 425, 450. And so you can imagine that someone leveraging $680,000 home to move into our $450,000 home market has significant more leverage than, you know, the community that would be serving us in in these middle income, moderate income jobs. So the way that we add equity into our community and building equity in in your community is is a good thing. It's a positive thing for those who choose to go that route is by increasing the demand. Now, you mentioned the first time home buyer program. There are definitely some things we can do to restructure that. And we're looking at that. That's not really the purview of this this plan. And I can talk to you about that offline if you're interested. But I do, I think we've restructured our our first time home buyer program so that it works right now in terms of, you know, those equity issues. The problem is that there's nothing on the market that meets our first time home buyer program ratios because the housing market is white hot. And so the housing costs are too high for anyone who qualifies for our program to also qualify for a loan to be able to purchase one of these. And so that's another signal that, you know, there's something really wrong with our housing market right now. You know, going going back up to some of the other questions that you asked. What if the project doesn't meet the criteria? Yeah, absolutely. There's a pathway if you, the primary thing that this does is gives a principally permitted pathway for projects that, you know, that give high density housing. And so if you come in and you're not providing, you're not going to provide high density housing, you're going to, you know, provide jobs, let's say, and there's not going to be any housing associated with it. You know, or you're going to provide some other service that's that's, you know, allowed for in that zone, but you don't want to do the housing component. Then you go through a permit process, use permit to go before the commission and address the use that you wish to do. Make your case for why it complies with the the concept behind the the gateway area plan and and provides for that vibrancy that we're looking for, those jobs that we're looking for. And then, you know, it's the exact same process that we have right now for many of those uses. And then you had asked about, oh, not everyone can develop this type of housing. So that's an important piece I want to come come to. I'm going to share my screen again. You know, citing that only certain developers would have the potential to to build these out. So this is in the gateway plan, it's table seven. Talks about, you know, the the development types within the various districts and the base tier versus, you know, these community benefits tiers where you would have to, you know, provide amenities to to get into these higher tiers. And I think we've been really focused as a community on, you know, how big these buildings could be and what the maximum building height could be. But I just want to draw everyone's attention to this next line, which is really, really important, is that we have a minimum building height. And so, you know, right now I can tell you, if if, you know, developer A wanted to build an eight story building tomorrow, they just would not be able to do it. There's not, there's not a train large enough in Humboldt County to to build an eight story building. And so that's a significant cost. In fact, I I think it's probably cost prohibitive and I can I can get some information on that to share with you. But this is, this is a maximum, this is a minimum in this district. And so if someone can come in and build three stories. Right now, the maximum development height in the gateway area is four stories. Housing is not allowed in the gateway right now, but but you can build a building that's 45 feet tall. And, you know, similarly in the downtown, the maximum building height is four stories. But the minimum building height is two to three. So there's a range in there. When someone comes in, you know, not everyone's going to have the capacity to build an eight story building, but every developer in this community has capacity to build a four story or a three story. There's no developer who doesn't have the technology, the skills, the ability, the know how to build a three story building. So it's not going to become a monolithic, one size fits all, you know, development zone owned all by one person. There's a lot of, a lot of potential out there. I think those were all of your questions.
Yes, thank you. Does any other commissioner have any questions? Commissioner Mayor?
Hi, I I think I may have as many comments as as questions, probably more comments than questions. First, I'm I'm excited by this plan's creation of an opportunity to fulfill Arcata's need for affordable and diverse housing in convenient locations. And I'm also excited at the idea that we're going to be doing it, if we do it, in a way that involves slightly different processes than what we're using now. I think that the car free lifestyle is a lovely 21st century ideal, which will work for targeted groups of residents, but will depend very heavily on the cities and the regions' ability to develop a usable, robust public transportation system. Beyond that, we're basically looking at students who can probably get to the university by foot or bicycle. And so we, I I think it's important to recognize the extent to which many of these projects would actually be targeted toward students or staff or others closely tied to the university community. And so I'm, I'm looking at the ways in which the plan's policies indicate potential cooperation with the university as a partner. And I'm also looking at the potential for the university to act on its own regardless of what the city of Arcata's standards, desires and form based codes might present. And and so I think what I'm, what I'm about to make here is a plea for any cooperation or any joint planning with the university to be done openly and above board, transparently and in a participatory manner. I think the overall vision of the plan is is sound. But the university's plans that will affect our community must be responsive to our community. And it must be through a process that we all can see. The form base, and and I I realize that there are policies in the draft plan that indicate that that cooperation will happen. I'm 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 just begging that it should be done in an open way, a way that right now is not how the university has been operating vis a vis the city of Arcata and its planning. the city of Arcata and its planning desires. I'm also looking at this idea of the form based codes and the pick and choose model of development benefits and amenities. It it's a sound concept, it it's it's tried, it's it's been proven in many places, but the devils tend to be in the details, and until we see that zoning code and the design standards, it's really difficult to say a whole lot about what makes sense, except that I'm concerned that in many cases, the things that are considered to be community benefits density, it is not really in itself a benefit, a benefit at all. And the price that the community is being asked to pay to support these increased densities need to work to the entire community's benefits. Which, you know, that goes extensively into the traffic and circulation systems, but today we're being asked to address the land use, housing and infrastructure sections. I am very concerned that the potential for 7,000 more residents in 3,500 units will create a burden on the wastewater treatment plant before the city has really worked out how our wastewater system is going to benefit or at least not harm water quality in the area as as well as the extensive wetland system related to it. I know that we've got a plan to upgrade the sewage treatment plant, and I know that its costs have been mounting every time a new issue comes up. The the EIFD idea is another one which I would hope if the city is going to be going that direction is done in a very open and transparent way. Who actually pays the cost of borrowing money? The debt will be held by the city as a whole. It is a concern, and also the timing of all these things. Arcata would need a much more robust, adequate public facilities requirement that the facilities be in place prior to development approvals than we have at the moment. And, you know, that's something that would happen in the general plan, not necessarily here. But I I am concerned about the timing of all of this and the the role of the actors, especially the university or major project developers who might be coming from Los Angeles and bringing their own cranes. I'm not sure that we can talk about all of this without talking about those those tiered levels of benefits and standards. The the thing that that really caught my attention here was the idea of an eighth floor luxury penthouse being considered a benefit to the community while it blocks our views. I think it's really important to carefully weigh what we consider benefits and what we consider amenities that must be offered in return, and we don't have that information yet. That that's going to be in that zoning code and in the development standards, and I hope that we'll actually have a chance to debate those things publicly. Rather than to see them at the last minute when there's pressure to finally adopt the plan. And and finally, I I guess I am concerned at the idea of a ministerial approval for any project larger than any project we've seen in Arcata to date. No matter how carefully the development standards and the zoning code for a plan like this will be crafted. There's going to be an opportunity for developers of huge projects to to do things that we hadn't anticipated. And by offering, by by putting our hands out and offering a ministerial approval for such huge projects, we've closed the door on the ability of the community to continue to say, oh, yeah, we we haven't thought of that. And we're stuck, we're gonna, we would be legally stuck. So I'd love to see what the draft zoning code associated with the gateway plan will be. And I hope that the community can have some major input into what that's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that we haven't heard from? No. Commissioner Figueroa?
Yeah, just, I guess it's really quickly. I guess I'll just focus on the infrastructure policies, that's more my realm. In respects to, for instance, you know, the low impact design issues that we have in regards of increasing density, increasing development within our community. I, this is a question that I asked when we were walking around, you know, when we first visited this and the first time I actually got to meet all you guys. You know, how are we going to be handling low impact develop, you know, the low impact design in regards to this development? You know, we we state here in this in in this policy chapter that we encourage and incentivize opportunities to incorporate LID. Where in fact, it's actually mandated via the State Water Resource Control Boards and PDS general permit for small municipal separate stormwater sewer systems. And with the increased, you know, net, new net impervious services, we have a lot of stormwater that we have to treat. And if we can't treat it, because for instance, in this, in in the gateway area, in the barrel area, we have groundwater that's at three feet below ground surface, four feet below ground surface. You know, how are we supposed to design infiltration basins by retention basins to handle stormwater from these developments, from the new parking lots, the new, you know, new sidewalks, new roofs, so on and so forth. You know, alternatives, alternatives are essentially, you know, we have rainwater catching vaults essentially, which would store the water, but then would still need to be treated. So then it goes back to the other issue in respects to, you know, our our existing wastewater treatment facility. You know, could it actually handle the capacity to to treat stormwater that comes from our roadways, that comes from our sidewalks, that comes from our roofs? You know, can add, can can the added load? You know, can our, could this added load, you know, actually be dealt with by our existing system? This has been, it's been a real big concern of mine the entire time, just because, you know, these are, this is not just an incentive action or or essentially an encouragement, it's like it's a requirement by state law. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's just, we really need to think about this sort of stuff. Just because it's, you know, do we even really have a project if we don't, if we can't treat stormwater? You know, treatment BNP's are a huge issue, you know, in respects to new development, you know, especially now with Clean California rules and so forth. You know, to handle litter and, you know, degrees going into our waterways. So I I just wanted to focus on that in regards of just one instance in this. And, you know, it's going to be difficult to really get into the nitty gritty without understanding the zoning codes, and again, the development standards. How, which we're going to be handling these sorts of situations. And, you know, do we have the monies, you know, in regard to seeing, you know, the the attempt to build buy it now and pay for it later through, you know, bond debt? You know, is this actually, you know, going to be feasible? And, you know, do we need to start considering infrastructure improvements now before we start considering? You know, this, you know, incredible amount of growth. So that's about it for my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just address that real quick, you know, absolutely, you know, we can refine this low impact design. I think the the idea here was to encourage incentivize low impact, low impact design that goes above and beyond what's required by the state. We don't right now have any projects that that have stormwater intentionally plumbed into the sewer system. That's not the treatment requirement. And so all of those are treated on site, and in the future, they'll be, they'll continue to be treated on site. And, you know, absolutely, the, you know, site specific details as to how that treatment happens is going to be left to the individual project to prove, and if they can't meet those standards, then they won't be able to 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 develop. I guess the one, you know, one thing to, you know, kind of counterpoint is that if if you have a one story building, you have the same amount of impervious surfaces you have a four story building. And so you're getting, you know, more developed potential for more, you know, community use and activity. But you're still having the same impact on stormwater.
Any other questions?
Dan Tech? Sorry, briefly, David, were there balloons flown last Saturday? And if so, was that? I I heard that there were and that they were supposed to indicate some building height. Was that a city thing? And the other question I have is, are there any communities in Northern California that have enacted similar development strategies that you've walked through or visited or can direct us to Healdsburg or somewhere that probably has five, six, seven stories near their downtown corridors in a similar kind of population base? You know, I keep hearing, let's not make this into, you know, and that somebody will throw something out in LA. And I, you know, I can't relate to that, that's, 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 you know, more than half the state lives in LA. I did, but is there something in Northern California that you can touch on that is similar to this vision?
Yeah, there there are plenty of examples, and maybe what I'll plan for a future planning commission meeting is sort of a virtual tour of some of these downtowns and some of the plans that we look to for inspiration for, you know, how to how to do this planning process.
I think the public would really like to see that too.
Yeah, and the balloon, I I heard rumors of a balloon. It wasn't the city, I wish it was, because that's a killer idea. I love the fact that whoever did that did it. And I hope it's, you know, it's getting out there and and being made public. It kind of relates to, you know, I mean, it's just, it's basically a story poll process. It must have done it on a winless day, because otherwise, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be eight stories. But but it does sort of translate into, you know, what the next steps are. I think one of the community members had asked about, you know, how do we go through the next steps for design process? And, you know, what, you know, what what we'd like to do after we get this framework? You know, we're we're hearing a lot, I mean, I'll just be perfectly blunt, we're hearing a lot from many different sectors. The majority of the different sectors, I would, I would hazard a guess, and we haven't tallied up the comments yet, but that, you know, people are concerned that eight stories is too tall. And in particular, we're hearing from, you know, several architects that, you know, it's just too tall. And, you know, so maybe eight stories is too tall. And so we'll be revising that downward and through this framework, if we revise that downward, the council says, you know, yeah, eight stories is too tall, we want you to go to six, let's say. Then our next steps will be to get into a little bit more resolution. We have a, our consultant has a GIS system that they can use to create, you know, basically, you know, blocks for massing to get a sense for, you know, rough sense for what that massing would look like on the ground. And then it also will be able to use, you know, shadow projections so that you can see what the shading would look like and that sort of thing. So that'll be one avenue that we explore with the community. And then the second, you know, we haven't completely resolved on, but what what the idea that was floated was to take some, you know, sketchup models that are relatively simple to put together and then put those inside those, you know, those block models so that we can see, okay, within that framework, here's an actual development that we might see on the ground on this specific location, and then you'd be able to have kind of a virtual experience with it. And then another sort of layer of design detail that we'll go through with the community involves, you know, selecting from sort of the template of of designs that we see in the community that we want to, you know, see replicated. If you go in the Creamery District, you'll see many of the new buildings borrow ideas, design ideas from the old buildings. And I think that's part of what gives it the the cohesion that that area has. And so we'll be, you know, taking that that process as well. You know, to ensure that we have, you know, community input on on those designs. So we don't end up with something that, you know, looks like it could be in LA or or, you know, any town USA. The the intent is to make it rapidly Arcata.
All right, any last, oh, Commissioner Mayor?
Um, yeah, I I wanted to ask also, I think since our last meeting, the notice of preparation has come out for this draft plan and the general plan amendments that that would presumably be adopted around the same time since the gateway plan is envisioned as an element of an amended amended general plan. And I'm wondering if you could say a few words about how the environmental impact assessment and cumulative effects analysis is going to work with not just the gateway plan element, but with the general plan as a whole. It's 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 way early to envision what the EIR for this is going to look like, but I appreciate that the city wants to develop both the plan and the environmental impact analysis of its potential effects simultaneously. So I I wonder if you can just say a few words about that and also about what the planning commission's role might be in that EIR process as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess in brief, the EIR will cover, you know, all of the elements of the general plan, general plan update. We have a general plan 2020 that was planning process through the year 2020. We'll be updating that to, you know, to accommodate the next 20 year plan. As well as, you know, pulling in a couple of new elements, the gateway plan is one of the new elements. Specific area, it's, I'm sorry, it's a a community plan for this specific area that's identified. In addition to, you know, a couple other elements that'll address some health and equity policy and then climate adaptation policy. In addition, the zoning that's proposed for the gateway area plan and then some other upzoning that the the planning commission has identified previously associated with the local coastal program, as well as some other minor zoning changes will be incorporated into that EIR as well. So the notice of prep that we released is essentially a signal to the world that, you know, we've got this idea, we're thinking about doing a project, we're getting ready to do an EIR for it. And it's early notice to, you know, the agencies, so they're, they've got it on their radar. And if they have any early comments that they'd like to provide, they can do so before we start writing the EIR. In addition, we'll be holding a community scoping meeting as well as an agency scoping meeting to ensure that we can, you know, adequately cover the concerns of of those two groups within the scoping process. And so that's all included in the notice of prep as well, which is also on our website. And so folks can can go to the CERC website and, you know, get that information, I won't recite it here. I'm sorry, and the planning commission's role will be I'm sorry, and the planning commission's role will be obviously making a recommendation to the council who ultimately will, you know, will, you know, certify the EIR and, and adopt the, you know, the general plan and zoning ordinance updates, whatever they may be at that time. So planning commission will be intimately, intimately involved all the way through the process.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Judith?
It's a, it's a little add-on to this. My understanding is that the California State University is not considering their plans to expand the university as a project subject to SEQA. Has, has there been any discussion with the CSU or with the university about addressing the potential for cumulative environmental impacts as a result of those expansion plans?
No, nothing, you know, no formal discussions have initiated at this point. The, the, the plan, and again, I don't want to speak for the university. The plan is outlined in their prospectus and, and the community should, you know, go to the, the Polytech webpage where they can review the prospectus and all the planning efforts. There are actual, actually several working groups that are working on different elements of the Polytech rollout. Those are all listed. The chairs for each of those is listed on the, the Polytech website. And, you know, so if folks are interested in what's going on in any particular area of the Polytech development, they can, you know, certainly and reach out to the university. In terms of, you know, the policy that we have to work with the university and, and continue to collaborate. You know, we, you know, absolutely do want to, you know, work in partnership to make sure that we're, our, our projects, you know, address one another. And so while, you know, I'm, you know, not certain the decision that you've referred to about the Polytech deciding that the, the master planning is not subject to SEQA, each of the individual projects would be. And so if they, you know, come forward with a project within a timeframe that, you know, overlaps with, you know, our planning process, obviously, we would take that into consideration in the cumulative effects analysis. And absolutely, in terms of, you know, the growth, population growth, the city is considering the university's plans as kind of an add-on or a major driver in population growth. And, you know, when we get those, those models resolved, I'll, I'll certainly bring those to the, the planning commission. We can walk through those.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, I'd like to close this, close this item and move into, on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence or communications?
Um, I think I'm all talked out.
All right, all right, then this meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thanks, all.